Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for April 4th, 2022 back to order. We started tonight's meeting in executive session where we discussed collective bargaining with all town unions. No decisions were made. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Anyone for public comment and announcement?
Good evening, Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. I'm here tonight to announce a few events the Harwich Chamber has coming up. First, we are happy to announce the annual toast of Harwich is back Friday, April 22nd, at the Bacolet Resort and Golf Club with various restaurants and beverage tastings. VIP starts at 6:00 PM and general admission starts at 7:00. Silent auction begins Friday at April 15th at the Chamber, similar to the Festival of Trees for anyone that is aware of how that worked. And then we're doing a live auction at the event from 8:00 to 9:00 PM with our auctioneer, Richard Waystack. The second event, and I'm really excited to announce this tonight, that we are going to be part of, and let's see, I'm losing my notes here. The second event came from something someone recently said to me. I need to paint the picture so they can see it and be a part of it. Art Week in Massachusetts is May 1st to the 8th. The Harwich Chamber of Commerce will be presenting a prelude to Art Week at 204 Sisson Road and sharing the Harwich Cultural Center's artists and resident makers through the events. Saturday, April 30th, from 2:00 to 6:00 will be in open studios where the public can come and visit with the resident artists and makers. And from 4:00 to 6:00, we are presenting an art exhibit and reception with non-alcoholic beverages and appetizers in the library. It's called Resilience, where artists will be submitting blue and yellow works depicting the role of art in the time of crisis. Then on Sunday, we will be presenting Plug and Play, showcasing 10 local musicians from our Wednesday nights, Port Summer Nights, 2:00 to 4:00, where bands will be rotating and performing. This will take place in the auditorium with full lights and sound system. We hope the public will come and enjoy the weekend events and truly feel all that 204 Sisson Road has to offer and will continue to be for the town of Harwich and our cultural districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Anyone else for public comment and announcement?
Michael.
Larry?
I'll wait for someone else.
No, we'll wait. We'll let you go first.
Thank you.
Then Joe.
Amy sent me a note a few days ago that Walter Deeks passed away. For you that remember him, he was a long-term Conservation Commission member, chairman for a number of years. Did an excellent job. He was, did all he wanted to do. He's run the conservation as respectful, and so we'll be mourn his passing. He contributed a lot to the town.
Thank you, Larry. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you, members of the board. Everybody assembled here today. For the board, it's in your packet, but just a reminder that there are several blood drives taking place in the month of April, supporting the Cape Cod Health Care. And the dates run, there was a session today in Harwich at our Public Safety Building. There are sessions this week and throughout the month, all the way through April 26th. And so there's always a need for blood, and anyone that's interested in donating can go to the capecodhealth.org/give-blood. So again, that's blood drives throughout the month of April.
Thank you, Joe.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening. Dan Pelletier, Water Wastewater Superintendent. So I just want to start with a couple of housekeeping things before I turn it over to Russ here.
Who's sitting beside you?
Russ Kleikamp, GHD.
Thank you.
Good evening.
I got to get better at introducing myself.
All right.
Apologies. So I was able, I think it might have been the last time I was here, we'd asked about the 0% or low interest loan program through the Bronsable County. I was lucky enough to get on the phone with them today, and the county has completed their pro forma, they've done their homework, and they're going to be going to the county commissioners on April 13th for approval to borrow funds from the Clean Water Trust. He said the trust, working with the trust could take anywhere from four to six weeks or so, so he said, give me by the end of the quarter, and the program should be up and running. So anyone out there who is in receipt of an order to connect and looking to pursue a loan through the Bronsable County Septic Loan Program, the end of the quarter is the latest and greatest as far as timing. Beyond that, the April 18th is the week Robert Brehauer will be starting a Continental and Widde, so he'll be beginning that work shortly, and I will turn it over to Russ.
All right.
Thanks, Dan.
One second. Any questions from the board? You're all set? You all set? Great, go ahead, Russ.
Hi, good evening. Russ Kleikamp, engineer with GHD. Wanted to give the board an update on the CWMP revisions. We recently completed the public input part of this assignment, and that included one virtual meeting, one in-person meeting, and a number of phone calls, emails that were sent to myself and other GHD staff. I believe in your package tonight is a list of all the comments that we got, how we document and just record all the public comments. The majority of the comments we had were on protection of the freshwater ponds, and then also specifically the phasing of the sewer-ing around Great Sand Lakes. I understand in the previous CWMP that that sewer-ing was, look, was it Phase 8 or 2048 was the proposed year for that? A number of residents called me with concerns that that might be too late, there might be irreversible damage, things of that nature, and then a lot of questions on freshwater ponds, things like that. So I did reach out to the Great Sand Lakes Association. I've worked with a number of towns on freshwater ponds on issues like that, and a lot of the questions that I was getting wasn't so much directed towards the CWMP, but it was just basic understanding of freshwater ponds, what are the threats, things like that. So we did have more of an educational meeting with the Great Sand Lakes Association. It was a virtual meeting where we talked about some of these things, and then specifically how the ponds would be addressed in the CWMP. Typical CWMP, or Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, addresses the wastewater threats to these ponds, you know, what are the threats, nitrogen, phosphorus, how much, things like that. But with freshwater ponds too, you also have a significant threat from the stormwater. So what I'm proposing tonight, after hearing the feedback from the residents, you know, we solicit their input on the CWMP, town has spoken, more emphasis on freshwater ponds, would like to, at no cost to the town, amend our scope of the CWMP to include the stormwater threats to the ponds. What that specifically includes is doing some field research, drainage area delineation, mapping of catch basins, outfalls to the ponds, things like that, and then coming up with a selection of the different technologies that can be put in. There are hundreds of them between leaching pits, constructed wetlands, depending on the site conditions. We select the proper technology to remove the nutrient threat, whether it's bacteria, nitrogen, phosphorus, whatever it may be, but to include all that in the report. So when this assignment is done, you'll have all the information you need to move right into whether you want to do a design phase, look for grants, things like that. It's just a more robust section. We're not going to lessen the scope for any of the wastewater-related items. This would strictly be an additional item. We can package it as a separate memo if that's more appropriate, as a section of the report. But really to address the, all the comments that we've heard about this would be my proposal to the board, and I've talked this over with Dan, and that's one of the reasons why we're here tonight. I'll take a quick pause for any questions, and I have a couple other bits of information.
Thank you, Russ. Larry?
Thank you, Russ, for that. No, the one I listened to, there certainly was a lot of interest in the ponds. Let me ask you, when you do this report, will you link with the state? Because some of these drainages are state roads, you know, the MS4, and they, unforcing, as far as I understand, have excluded themselves from responsibility. And so I would hate to see that left out of this report, so at least we, if they're, we need to press them to get involved, and we need the information to do so, not leave them off the pitcher.
Correct, correct, yes. The MS4 is the stormwater permit that the town has to handle, but that really only requires action to ponds that are impaired, that are on the 303D list with the Great Sand Lakes, with Skenequit Pond. These are much smaller ponds, they're not on the 303D list, so just given the size, they won't be addressed as, you know, as part verbatim of the MS4. And Selectman Ballantyne, you're absolutely right, the state does have responsibility for Route 28 like that. We've done a bunch of these, and it's just easier to collect the, if it is, for example, on Route 28, things like that. We'll map the catch basins, delineate the drainage areas, things like that, because a lot of times you have runoff from a state road that ends up on private property, you know, we have all these unique circumstances, and I'd like to get through a lot of that as part of this assignment. Yep.
Julie?
So, so when you're going to do that analysis, there's no additional cost to the town?
Correct.
You'll collect that information, and then will you, based on your findings, kind of come up with a priority list of, you know, because we'll be looking at money and...
That's exactly what we'll do. We'll see which, where the hotspots are around the ponds, what's the most bang for the buck. If you're going to spend $50,000 on stormwater technology, we want to make sure that that first $50,000 is the one that's capturing the most of the pollutants, where they're coming from, depending on where it is. So we generally do prioritize the implementation, and that's based on the maximum nutrient removal for the dollar spent.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Mary?
Just thank you, and you had me at no extra charge.
Very good. We always like to start with that, that's the...
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Russ, we're not posted to actually vote in favor of anything.
Sure, understood.
It was just a presentation, but I agree with everybody else. This would be a great addition.
Great.
It's, we're polluting other bodies of water, we should be looking at it.
Yeah, and it's, you know, for the longest time, just working on the Cape for 20 years doing this, the CWMPs, they generally, again, this is in my opinion, you know, they kind of lay off the emphasis of the freshwater ponds, you know. One of the things I'd really like to do is make the CWMP a model moving forward and really have Harwich be the standout for the protection of the freshwater ponds. The Cape Cod Commission just released their 2021 Pond Atlas, which is a fantastic document. It talks about all the ponds, the threats, things like that. But there's a lot of other things we can be doing and jumping on for the freshwater ponds, so I'm excited, excited to include this.
Thank you. Anyone in the public wish to comment on this?
And I have one more statement, too.
Yep. Just go to the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening. Alan Thompson, Water Wastewater Commissioner. As far as the ponds go, I think we're 25, 30 years too late. I took a ride over, I tuned in on the event the other night, and, but beforehand, I took a ride over to Buck's Pond and took a look, and it's tragic what's happened there. And when I say tragic, you know, I grew up here, we swam in that pond, you could drink that water without a thought. Now the ponds are black. If you take an aerial photograph of the ponds, they show up black. There's no blue. It's tragic what's happened over at Buck's Pond in the town beach there. The road runoff has just eroded. All that sand down into the pond, the roads all connect, they all run downhill into the pond. Shame on the town. Shame on us for not doing something about it. They put a rock bed in there to help contain it, but it just washes over all of that. It's a tragic mess out there now. The little pond, the Lily Pond that was there, used to be pristine, but I wouldn't even let my dog drink out of it now. And it's a shame. John Joseph's, all of them, you know, severely impaired. They used to be a treat, but now anything we can do for drainage, anything, just to stop the runoff, the pollution pouring into them, never mind the septicage, we should be doing. So we need to put it on the list and set some priorities for it. Otherwise, they're going to smell, they're going to look bad, they are looking bad. They're going to be green instead. You know, they're black now, just a matter of some temperature and a little more pollution, and they'll be green. So really, shame on us, but they used to be such a beautiful asset, and somewhere along the way, they may affect the drinking water. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Alan brings a follow-up question, if I may.
Go ahead.
For Russ. Because Alan raises a very good point. I mean, obviously, he always raises good points, but some of these fixes may not be that expensive. And so will you look at some solutions as well? Because some of the runoff, you know, you talk about natural collection, you know, we're not talking the big dollars that we talk off on the CWMP, so that type of information would be helpful, too.
Yeah, sure. We have both, in the world of stormwater, and to further confuse people with more acronyms, we hear the term BMPs all the time, Best Management Practices. And those can be either structural. When I say structural, that's a physical drainage structure put in, whether it's a catch basin, leach pit, constructed wetland, or there's non-structural, which is education. I did get, you know, with all the questions being asked, I did get stumped on a couple, you know, what are household... It's, I don't know everything, and believe me, it's more important to know what you don't know than what you do know. There was asked, you know, what's the maintenance on septic systems? Oh, good question. I never really looked into it. And then another one was, what's a list of household products with nitrogen, phosphorus, things like that? So I did respond back to the Great Sand Lake, looked it up and got it for them, but absolutely, there are some amazingly low-cost things, and sometimes it's just as simple as a berm restoration, you know, they're not all miracle fixes, of course, but absolutely, there's low-cost things that can be done.
I think if I can just add too, you know, ultimately, what I'd love, hope to see is, I'm sure everyone recalls the document from the CWMP that lists the phases, the cost, you know, Phase 2. I would like that to also incorporate the stormwater and freshwater action items, too. So we're really addressing both salt and freshwater with our comprehensive management plan, so really do incorporate everything.
Thank you, Dan. In the back?
Thank you for giving me the chance to speak. My name's Anne Frichette, and I live at 10 Paradise Path, which is right on John Joseph Pond, and I'm here representing the Great Sand Lake Water Quality Committee, and I have a letter that I'd like to read into the record that should also have been included in the Selectmen's packet we submitted it two weeks ago, and I have two comments to follow up. So here we go with the letter. "The members of the Great Sand Lakes Association Water Quality Committee recommend and actively support all recommendations to prioritize the construction of sewers on Queen Anne Road in Phase 3 of the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. Scheduling Queen Anne Road last, as in the current version of the CWMP by CDM Smith, will in all likelihood render the ponds unusable for recreational use and negatively impact property values throughout the neighborhood. As far back as 2007, there have been warnings about water quality in Bucks and John Joseph Ponds and recommendations for change. Fifteen years later, nothing has changed as far as the protection of ponds is concerned, and data that we collect routinely from June to September show that baseline levels of E. coli have shifted to a new normal, higher than before, and excess mineral content favorable to cyanobacteria growth has reached a threshold where it is now becoming a serious health problem. As recently as the summer of 2021, APCC, the Association to Preserve Cape Cod, put John Joseph Pond in the red category for three weeks due to a potential cyanobacteria bloom, based on their testing protocols. And then in the fall of 2021, a concerning very widespread algae bloom was observed and video documented off of Association Beach on Buck's Pond. Unfortunately, the bloom occurred outside of our normal testing window, so we do not have definitive proof that it was cyanobacteria, but we're still very concerned nevertheless." "Our recommendation for the revision of the CWMP is to follow the water. Water flows from north of Route 6 through the Great Sand Lakes to Thompson's Field, then south Harwich, Chatham, and the ocean. It makes more sense and is more efficient and effective to work along the natural contours of the water flow than to jump around from one area of Harwich to the next, as the current CWMP proposes. We are at a point now in which town and even potential county and federal funding is available, and water department and contractors seem willing to prioritize the Great Sands Lake neighborhood. Members of the GSLA Water Quality Committee hope that our input and interest in preventing further water quality degradation are given a fair hearing, and that a decision favorable to the preservation of our ponds is forthcoming. Our ponds are essential to the quality of life in our neighborhood. We use the ponds for swimming, fishing, sailing, kayaking, windsurfing, paddle boarding, many other activities. Families across multiple generations enjoy time together in the water and on the ponds' public beaches. Our annual neighborhood picnic on Association Beach would not be the same without kayak and sailing races around Buck's Pond, so please work with us to preserve the ponds. We appreciate your support." So I have two follow-up comments. The first is that since we wrote this letter on March 18th, we did have our March 30th meeting with Mr. Kleikamp and with Dan Pelletier, and 57 households from our neighborhood showed up, you know, via Zoom, obviously, but we had 57 households show up. That's a significant number of households on our pond, and it was very, very favorable. Everybody was excited that there was the possibility that we could be taking action to support our ponds. And then on a personal note, I'd like to say, because this is a committee letter, I swim in the pond every day from April to Thanksgiving, and I would be just devastated if I was not able to swim in our pond. And my son, my 14-year-old, is the GSLA kayak first-place champion, running four years in a row, and I would not want to have to tell him that we're not going to have a kayak race because the pond is filled with cyanobacteria, and so we're going to cancel it for a year. Just as, you know, my neighbors here don't ever want to have to tell their children or their grandchildren, "I'm sorry, honey, you can't go in the pond today because it could make you sick." So again, we're at a point now where we could do something to make a difference and keep these ponds functional for our neighborhood, so I encourage you to work with us and work with Mr. Kleikamp and Mr. Pelletier to make this happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Back to you, Russ.
Okay, just a few more final comments. Some more good news with all the, you know, we've, every town has been hammered with this, ARPA funds, county funds, infrastructure bill, some of it makes sense, a lot of it doesn't make sense. But we are, we've been seeing that the Clean Water Trust is getting a lot of money put into it, which there are. And the Clean Water Trust, what they do is they administer the SRF, the loan program. They basically call it the bank, and they're getting a bunch of money from the infrastructure bill, up to potentially 48% principal forgiveness over the next five years. Again, and I'm thinking, all right, these towns have hundreds of millions of dollars to sue, so you mean to tell us we're getting $50 million? So I'm saying that cautiously, but I've seen enough out there that this might, that we need to think about this. Stick with me here. So going back to the, to all the public comment, we have an area above Great Sand Lakes because the town did the Sewer Cad model, we have that entire sewer system designed. We know how deep it is, where it's going, all that good stuff. I understand it's the last area that's proposed to connect to the town of Chatham or would go to Chatham's treatment facility, and if this program's being offered at the next five years with potentially 48% debt forgiveness, we can kind of see the stars aligning here to say, hey, this might be good to do sooner than later. But myself and the wastewater superintendent have to talk more about this, but that's...
But to pile on.
That's, that's where, that's where our heads are at right now, so we're giving you a little glimpse of the future and future meetings.
Yeah, and really, just to build on that, you know, we're in the process of designing Phase 3, which I think is going to be an excellent candidate for the town to get some of that principal forgiveness back. Beyond that, as Russ just indicated, you know, outside of Phase 3 in Great Sand Lakes, unless us or another community builds a treatment plant that we can send wastewater to, we're up the creek without a paddle, if you will. So, you know, if we wanted to make best, you know, use of this money and try to get it inside the next five years, the next logical place to look is Great Sand Lakes.
And that, you know, the system, just size-wise, I don't believe it's anywhere near the magnitude of Phase 3. It's a relatively small area, it's just one pumps, the way the Sewer Cad model has, it's just one pump station. So it's not a tremendously large, you know, expansive area, it's just basically right above the three or four ponds there.
And I guess, lastly, if, I'm happy to take questions on that, but I was going to kind of change gears here. Let's, let's take questions on that. Don? All set? Mary?
No, I'm all set.
Julie?
No, I'm all set.
Larry? Now you can go.
All right. So I guess just building off of this meeting, and I think it's important to keep the board, as well as the public, you know, up to speed as to what's going on, how things are progressing, I'd like to propose, whether it be the first Monday or second, whichever the board would like, that we come back and do recurring monthly updates on the CWMP update process. Thinking the next discussion we'd like to bring before you would be build-out, a discussion about build-out and how to handle that in the CWMP revisions. We have a couple of ideas, but it's ultimately, the board's steering the ship, so.
We'll keep updates to five minutes. I know there's always long agendas, so.
It's an important topic, they could be longer than five. Dan, we'll work together to get that date, and we can pick a monthly date.
Yeah.
Be great. Joe, anything?
Nope, we've talked about that, and we have some ideas in mind on the monthly updates.
Okay. Anyone in the public wish to speak? All set? Anyone online? I think you guys are off the hook.
Thank you very much. Before I go, I'd be remiss if I didn't wish Alan his happy first birthday today.
Happy birthday, Alan.
Thank you all very much.
So Dan's taking you to dinner.
I was turning one in the garden.
Michael?
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
Before you leave here, guys, do you have a real version of, or a decoder ring for the CWMP questions and answers? The way it appears on a computer screen...
Was there one sheet in there? I thought we had like a summary, like a one page. I asked our engineer that put that together to give a sum. If we, if you don't have...
I don't have the summary.
No.
And then, Don, we can get that printed much bigger downstairs, so.
I did put together, I understand that that's the raw data we collect, but we will have a one-page summary, we can sit, that lists, you know, just the general topics.
That's great.
Okay. Mary, will you do A, B, and C?
I move that we vote to approve the consent agenda. First, to accept a gift from Mr. Paul Doane to Town of Harwich for the project at Crowell Barn in the amount of $10,000. Second, to approve a Caleb Chase request in the amount of $671. And last, to approve Board of Selectmen meeting minutes for December 8th, 2020, September 13th, 2021, and September 30th, 2021.
Second. Moved in seconded to approve Consent Agenda A, B, and C. Any discussion?
Did you say 20th or 30th? I meant 20th.
20th.
You're good. Larry, you all set?
I'm set.
Okay, roll call, vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. You can do D now. We just usually don't do appointments under Consent Agenda, so I took it separately.
Thank you.
I move that we vote to approve the appointment of Ann Tucker to the Planning Board, term to expire June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? Roll call, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Joe, I will give you A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what you have in your packet, little bit out of order, but you can see the request from the Harwich Mariners to construct and then gift to the town a new merchandise shack, and that's, if you're familiar with White House Field, behind, home plate behind the snack shack, and they want to construct it in such a manner as it's consistent with the bathrooms that they built back in 2016, and also gift it to the town. The Mariners' request went before the Rec and Youth Commission last week, and you can see our director has indicated that the commission supports that request with the stipulation that all permits and approvals be fulfilled by the Mariners, and that all funding comes solely from the Mariners. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if the board's agreeable, the manner that we had done the bathrooms, or the town had done the bathrooms, is a license agreement where you make reference to the construction, the gift, and then the use of it, and so if so directed, I can work with Mary Henderson and her group with Rec and Youth to get the license agreement going on that merchandise shack. It's my understanding that they already have the funding, they've done the fundraising drives, and it's not as complex as the bathrooms were, so it is entirely possible that they can meet their stated goal of June of this year.
Thank you. What action do you need from us tonight?
If the board's agreeable, if you direct me, I can go ahead and start getting the paperwork going.
Any questions from the board? Larry?
None.
Julie?
None.
Mary?
None.
Don?
Nope.
So directed?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mary, B?
I move that we vote to approve a 2022 seasonal trampoline license renewal for the Trampoline Center, 296 Route 28.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Go ahead with C, and you can do that in a group.
I can do them all, okay. I move that we vote to approve the 2022 seasonal common viculars license renewals for the following: A G G Corp., DBA The Weather Deck Restaurant, 168 Route 28; 554 Street Bar LLC, DBA Three Monkeys, 554 Route 28; Witchmere Harbor Functions LP, DBA Witchmere Harbor Beach and Tennis Club, 23 Snow In Road; MT Group LLC, DBA Mad Minnow Bar and Kitchen, 554 Route 28; and Lucky Labrador, Inc., DBA Perks, 545 Route 28, pending building department approval.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. These ones we should do individually.
Okay. I move that we vote to approve 2022 seasonal entertainment license renewals for Witchmere Harbor Functions LP, DBA Witchmere Harbor Beach and Tennis Club, 23 Snow In Road. Weekdays, 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM outside, and 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM inside. Sunday, 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM outside, and 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM inside. Entertainment type: DJ band, live recorded music, amplification and dancing by live performers and patrons.
Second for discussion.
Okay, moved in seconded discussion. Don?
You knew I would. I'm a little troubled by the Sunday times because it is amplified. And with proximity, the Episcopal Church is right near there. I mean, 11 o'clock in the morning is, I think, kind of austere as, as an ask, because ultimately, if it was a wedding reception or something, I can't believe that they beginning that early. I, I'm not sure that there's a need for it, and I would like to push that back an hour.
Okay, Larry, comments?
On the other end of the spectrum here, I think we've been asking mostly she pulls at midnight rather than one. I want to do both ends.
Matrix last year shows a lot at 12, some at 12:30. This particular establishment was 1:00 AM last year as well.
Mary?
Back to Don's question, it's the same as what they had last year. They had 11:00 AM. I mean, not that we did it last year, so we have to do it, but it is, it is what they've had. I'm wondering if it's for brunches, you know, like Brighton shower brunches would be that hour. I can't believe there'd be a rock-a-span there at 11:00 AM. And, and we ever had, we had one complaint issue, which was leaving the door open. I don't hope we've ever had it completely.
I'm just worried about the outside, not the inside.
Julie?
I don't, I mean, I would agree, you know, Sunday morning at, at 11, you know, I don't think you're going to get some big, loud bands that would impact the church. Probably more for brunches and showers and things like that. I would agree. And seeing that they had similar hours last year, I don't feel like it changes.
I don't have a problem with it. It's a lot, it's a private club and a, and a wedding venue, and they've shown to be very responsible, so I don't have a problem.
I would agree with sticking to what they had last year, where your experience, I wouldn't, I withdraw my concern.
Okay. Any comments from the public?
Bob Nickerson, Harwich Port. Here's my concerns. They don't say where this outside music's going to be played. My property on Davis Lane, it's 150 feet wide, is Merkel Beach. So they could go past Merkel Beach, and after that, it's not supposed to have any noise. So we have a new rooftop bar, that's the third floor. If they're going to play, have a DJ up there, dancing music, there's no way you're not going to hear it on Route 28, never mind the neighborhood. So I'm just, want some clarification of where they plan to have some of these events outside. I get, I agree, I don't care where they are inside, they've been very good inside, but they didn't have a DJ before. They didn't have a live band, they didn't have performers dancing before. So at what level are we, as neighbors, going to have to listen to this? I think it's unfair to put it, and there's a lot of expensive homes sitting there overlooking the beach, and are going to have to listen to this seven days a week from 11:00 AM to potentially 10:00 PM? I think that's quite a bit of an ask. I wish you'd consider that. Thank you.
Bob, if I, if I may, weren't they open last year at the end of the season? The wedding venue?
No.
Was not open? They had no bands outside last year?
They have not used that building yet. It's now about ready.
But they did have an outdoor...
Yeah, they did have outdoor, and if they're outdoor and they stay contained and it's not past their 150-foot, I'm fine. But I don't see how you can be 40 feet up in the air and not, and stop at 150 feet. I'm not seeing it. And of course, I argued it when they went for the permit. I didn't understand why they have, they didn't, you know, they got the permit, they got passed. I, I argued twice at ZBA about that. Now they have a building that you, you go down, down the steps at Bayview Road, you can't see the outer harbor because the building's there. So now we're going to hear the noise. I'm telling you, we're going to hear the noise. So, I mean, you guys did a great job. I'm really happy with what you've done with the bylaws. You have, you know, really emphasized the liquor stuff, but it says 150 feet. So that means we're going to have to be calling all the time. We don't want to do that. You don't want us to do that. The police don't want us to do it. So my feeling is, put the onus on them to make sure they stay in control to meet those regulations. And if they do, everybody's happy.
Yeah.
That's my point.
Go ahead, Julie.
So I have two comments to address your concerns. One is that, you know, that building, I, I agree it's high, but because it could be, it had to be made flood compliant, that allowed it to go that height. And ZBA, we have it in our bylaw that you can, once you're increasing to meet the flood, that it's allowed. But I do agree with you where it's not, we've not had that floor and that height in, in terms of noise traveling. What we've done with other facilities is to ask for their site plan, you know, in terms of their seating and how things are going to be, and that maybe we take a look at that just because noise will travel a little bit differently at that height.
But, but maybe, I mean, if we ask them, maybe they're not planning to have music and dancing on that first, that top floor. So lesser noise. I, it's not in here. I have no idea.
Right. I mean, I should get more information.
Part, part of this is they are very broad licenses, and as we found with several of them, when you question the band, how often you're going to play, it's not seven days a week, it's three days a week. It's not five days a week.
I get that.
You know, so it's, and then you got rain, and you got wind, and then you get seasonal, you, you know, so. Well, what's the pleasure of the board?
The only other thing I just want to say is similar to what we did with the restaurant in Harwich Inn.
Harwich Inn and Tavern?
Yeah.
Yep.
In West Harwich, where we did a site visit and just asked, you know, to listen to the noise and hear it, and then ask them to pitch things in certain ways that would help reduce the noise. I don't think there's any harm in just asking to, to see the setup, have the music played, see how it goes, and see if there's a way that you can sort of help deter some of that. To your point, it's seasonal.
Yeah, and, and the owners of this, this business are good partners with the town, and they would, they would welcome us all to come down and look at what they're doing. Go ahead, Bob.
I think, I think the idea is solve the problem before it becomes a problem.
Yeah.
No, not, not, not fight the problem later on. Let's just try to get it solved.
Well, and to your point, the onus is on them. So if they get, if they get noise complaints...
Right.
And, and I have no problem pointing that out again, but I think everyone with a liquor license at this point, an entertainment license, has been warned enough where if they make a mistake...
I know, but it's hard on, it's hard on people sitting in their yard and saying, "Are you going to call? Are you going to call? I don't want to call." I mean, it's, it's, it creates a ton of tension.
Yeah.
Nobody wants to call. Anyway, thank you.
All right, so the motion on the floor in the second is for the times listed. What do we want to do? Mary?
I think we should withdraw the motion and do as Julie suggested, have a site review.
The only...
At least a conversation with them.
Right, yeah, just a conversation.
The only problem with that is I know that some of these licenses are on here tonight because they plan on opening, and they're not going to be able to open if we don't pass something tonight. So there's, there's certainly, we can bring back an entertainment license based on this conversation if we go there and don't feel that they're doing enough to contain it. And even to Bob's point, the onus is on them this year. It's not on us. We have created every policy and everything that we can to control this music scene in Harwich. Now it falls on the bar owners. I, I don't think we should hold the license up tonight.
I don't think we have to, right? Can't we just vote it and say, subject to a, a, just a review or a conversation, just to see what the overall seating is of the music or whatever? I mean, we're not trying to hold them up.
No, that sounds reasonable.
But to Bob's point, let's get ahead of it, and let's address it, and see what we can do and have that conversation. So we voted subject to having follow-up, that's all. Okay?
Works for me.
And I note that they did show their opening day is April 1st, so that means you're right there looking to be open now.
Right.
Joe, any problem with the conversation we're having?
None whatsoever. I'm looking on the application, and every one of the regulatory agencies is part of community development, and we've done site visits before. So I do think if the licensing authority wants to do a site visit and staff does a site visit, I think that's just good due diligence.
Okay.
Is that part of the motion then?
That's part of my motion.
Okay. Is that part of the second?
Yes.
Okay. So we will reach out through staff and, and set up some times for the board and anyone that wants to go walk the facility, staff. Okay? Roll call, vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
With the change, aye.
And I'm an aye.
I move that we vote to approve the 2022 seasonal entertainment license renewal for Lucky Labrador, Inc., DBA Perks, 545 Route 28, pending building department approval. Weekdays, 11:30 to 10:00 PM outside, and 12 noon to 12:00 AM inside. Sunday, 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM outside, and 3:00 PM to 12:00 AM inside. And I got confused here because there's another 1:00 PM to 12:00 AM inside.
I think they were doing that for the ambient music.
That's right, that's right. Entertainment type: jukebox, radio, TV, dancing by patrons and live performers, live recorded music amplification, and that ambient music and/or TV only relates to the 1 to 12 inside.
Yes. Second.
Okay, moved in seconded. Discussion. Don?
I'm somewhat still confused, looking at his application. So what's, what's Sunday going to be outside?
Sunday outside is 6 to 10.
Okay. I have nothing then.
And I believe it's the same as last year.
Yeah, that's what happened.
It is.
I have nothing.
Mary?
I'm all set.
Julie?
I'm good.
Larry?
I'm set.
Public? Anyone in the public? Anyone online? Roll call, vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I move that we vote to approve 2022 seasonal entertainment license renewal for...
No, we're done. We're going on to RE, ARPA funds. Carol? I think we all have a memo with some suggestions from our finance director on ARPA funds. Welcome, Carol.
Thank you. Good evening. Carol Coppola, Finance Director. The Town of Harwich received 50% share of the ARPA funds, the direct ARPA funds, last June. And the total amount that's been awarded to the Town of Harwich is just over, or just under $1.3 million. And those are the, that's the direct funding. This is not the county funds. I have some suggestions here of how the Town of Harwich may take advantage of those funds. In my opinion, the Town of Harwich is in desperate need of Office 365 for communication, for storage, for sharing information, for telephone service and, and things of that nature. It's a subscription service, so you'll pay a subscription on an annual basis. The ARPA funds must be fully committed by December 31st, 2024, and fully expended by December 31st, 2026. So this would allow you a number of years to pay those subscriptions from the ARPA funds. I did receive a legal opinion, and the attorney that I received the opinion from was in agreement that it certainly fell within the guidelines of the expenditure of those funds. And then we have some other items here. One of them's extremely minor, VNA contract for COVID surveillance. We had some funds that were expended that the Health Department had not budgeted for, for specifically for those funds. They do budget for VNA, just not COVID surveillance. And then you can use these funds for some of your capital needs. Even if they're one-time capital needs, you can use them. I made a suggestion here, you might want to consider the fence at the community center and the golf department vehicle. The golf department vehicle, as you're aware, is used by DPW to plow snow, and it's also used by the golf department. So I thought that it's an important asset for you to be able to replace.
Thank you, Carol. Larry, questions, comments?
No, I, I like Carol's recommendations, and so I, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Julie?
Oh, it'd be nice to enter the 21st century.
Mary?
The early.
Yeah, the early.
No, I'm good with that. Carol, this, this accounts for the ARPA money that we currently have in hand, correct?
This accounts for 100% of the ARPA money that has been designated directly for Harwich. We've received half of the, just under $1.3 million. We received half of that in June of last year. We'll receive the other 50% in June of this year.
And then, isn't there potential for some additional ARPA money?
Which is next on your agenda.
All right. No, no more, thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Julie. The only thing I have, want to say is, it's kind of tiring to continue to chase the rabbit that's out in front of us in the year that we're in. So recognizing that Office 365 is a continuing one-year subscription, we should be looking into the end of ARPA at some point. It's a great use for it to get us going, but once you get it, every, every single station has to have a subscription to that. It's not like buying software out of a box. So we should be planning for the future about what happens after that.
And what action do you want us to take tonight? And what action do you want us to take tonight? We only have to make the action to approve the request as presented, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I would move to...
And just so the public knows, they're not all looking at this. Year one, Office 365 is $290,526. Year two through five adds up to $796,476 for a total of $1,087. And then the vehicle, the golf department vehicle's $90,000, and we have that in here listed under year two through five. So one of those years most likely I would assume year two because we need it now. And then the community center fence is also year two through five. Same with the VNA COVID surveillance. With that, I would take a motion.
I move that we accept the proposal that we have in front of us for the expenditure of the ARPA funds.
Second.
Okay. Moved in second. Any further discussion? Anyone in the public? Anyone on, anyone online? Okay, roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you, Carol. Update from the Finance Director on ARPA county funds.
Barnstable County received 41 point, or will be receiving 41.3 million dollars for the 15 Cape communities, including the county. They've received half of that allotment already. They received theirs, I believe, last June as well. And the Assembly of Delegates passed an ordinance a couple of weeks ago to release $20 million to the communities. They've not decided on the final, I guess, decision of how to split that money up. They're making, they're deciding, I guess, one of the options is to split it based on population. The other option that they were considering is to split it based on tax rate. And so that, they, we believe, based on an update today, that that decision should be made within the next week. And then the county commissioners will work to release those funds through an application, a grant application, from all, each of the 15 communities in the Cape into a portal, in which those applications will be reviewed up to three approvals by three different sources. And then it'll come, the funds would get released to the communities. So we don't have a final word yet between the county commissioners and the Assembly of Delegates of how exactly they're going to finalize their decisions.
Thank you, Carol. Questions from the board? Larry?
Yeah, this is very discouraging. I can't believe we're going down this route because not only are they fighting internally, you're saying that if they decide to give the towns money, then we have to defend ourselves and apply for exact number we're going to use of grant funds, you know? Application by application, it seems to be their veriness in paperwork.
So...
Other than just distributing the funds that we could then use.
The Town of Harwich is on the direct share that the town was provided by, through the federal government, has reporting requirements. And we work off of a document, I think the final rule came out to be an extensive number of pages, maybe 500. And so we need to meet the regulations of that final rule. And we must report by April 30th, or on April 30th, how we're planning to spend that money, or how we have spent it already. The county is under those same regulations, so they have to report directly to the federal government of how each one of these, each dollar was spent. So yes, I agree that it could have been a letter or something different that, you know, the Town of Harwich would be, you know, pursuing the $2 million perhaps that they'll be awarding to the Town of Harwich and will be using it to fund wastewater design project. And there are many different ways that it could be done, but this is the decision that they made, which I believe is the same decision as other counties in the Commonwealth have gone on that route as well. So I don't think Barnstable County is alone. And I'm not defending anyone, so...
Yeah, because I stand by my statement. Because reporting requirements, we need to be accountable. I'm all for that. But doubling up and making this first, basically beg going after grants and then reporting afterwards is... Can't picture government being more inefficient than how they're trying to present this, but we have, you know, we'll live with it.
I think that they have to do their due diligence as well, and in order for them to do their due diligence, I think, I believe what the reviewers are going to look at is the final rule. And the reviewers are going to be comparing the Town of Harwich's application to the final rule, to make sure that it complies. And that at the end of the day, when December 31, 2026 comes along, that the federal government isn't coming back and saying, "Don't give me my, those $2,000 back" because they weren't spent in accordance with the categories that we provided.
You all set, Larry?
Yeah.
Julie, any questions?
So in the, so they're releasing the 20 million based on the parameters you just said. What are they doing with the extra 21.3? They're hanging on to decide how they're gonna...
Well, I think, well, they haven't, so they only received 50% of the 41.3 million thus far. And so they wouldn't be able to release all of it because they don't have it to release.
Okay. But then following up, I know, I remember when we talked about this in the survey, and we asked everybody to go on there and do the survey. So it sounds like they're back to trying to determine that despite the survey, and everybody taking the time to do the survey, we're back to square one. So my only other question, I guess, and I don't know that you know the answer, but let's just say the 20,000, Harwich submits five different applications for various monies, and some of them are either rejected or, you know, is there a lump sum sitting there for, sort of, that money will stay aside for that town to come back and improve their grants without knowing the amounts yet that we're gonna get? I mean, I, you know, I guess it's just kind of like a black hole.
I think what's the Assembly of Delegates makes a decision of how they're going to split those funds, whether it's through population or tax rate. The Town of Harwich will be awarded that sum.
Okay, so...
And it will be set aside for the Town of Harwich to make application for a grant application, to explain how you're planning to spend them.
Right, okay. And so, as you said, probably within a week or so, we should hear about that, possibly?
I'm sorry?
About a week or so till we hear about that?
That's what we heard today.
Yeah. Thanks.
Mary?
Don't I recall that you reviewed, it was like a big thick package of the, what this could be used for, and there were some pretty broad categories?
Yes.
Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
I'm thinking that based on the Town of Harwich's needs, that they're probably gonna want to use it for infrastructure, you know, clean water or drinking water or wastewater, you know?
I think we talked to that before. Thank you, Carol.
Dawn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna build on what Julie and Larry had said. And it actually isn't a question for you. It's, we're in a public meeting, so the only way you can really address the public here. It sounds kind of like layered with judgment. If we can get through the first round of whether they decide they want to do it based on tax rate or another criteria, it sounds to me like they're also gonna assess the merit of the project somehow, you know, on the second instance. If you're only looking at it for conformity to ARPA rules, that's one thing, but it's kind of flies in the face of local control of the money if they're going to do it and say, "But we still need to know what you're planning on doing, and we get the final say whether that's okay or not."
So based on the Q and A that happened at the end of this webinar today, or this meeting, public meeting, or meeting today, my understanding is it's just conformity only, that it's not competitive in nature. It's not, it's, you know, that the decisions will be made facing, you know, the study of that 500-page document and the, you know, and the understanding of, that these firms have is they've gone out and hired CPA firms to review the applications. And for Harwich, one of the CPA firms that they hired is Powers and Sullivan. So for Harwich, Powers and Sullivan cannot review that grant application. It has to be their, you know, there's another firm involved. So I think that there are administrative costs, absolutely. And perhaps they're necessary, they were deemed necessary. I don't know. I don't have that knowledge. But I do believe it's simply conform, they need to conform to the regulations.
Okay. I was just worried it was some sort of lightning round that we had to get into after we were able to win the first round.
Joe, anything on that?
I would just add, as Carol said, today was a webinar conducted by Barnstable County for, and I can't remember our individual roles, but I think I'd be the requestor and Cal's the certifier, something like that, where we both have a role on behalf of the town. And so they were presenting the demonstration of the potential portal to be used. And as Carol's indicated, they've talked that there were at least three different public accounting firms that they made reference to. And so everything I heard was, yes, there's going to be a portal, yes, there's a process. But I took it as so that when the awards are made, there's less risk of losing it when the federal auditors come into play.
Thank you. Dawn?
Just quickly, I'm just really concerned because I have experience in the federal government myself, and there's a state, and there's the local government. If we start getting, if this turns out to be spending a dollar fifty in overhead to get a dollar, which is not totally absurd when you're dealing with the federal government, then I would be really disappointed. And, Michael, I think, if I may, I think you helped me out a little bit. If it's for conformity, my, when you start talking grant, my concern is you go to some committee to judge the merit of our project. And I don't want, I don't want, I don't want to be in that game. You know, we need to conform, but we ought to be ourselves to decide what's important to us.
Right. I agree.
Thank you. All right, moving on. What we'll do, warrant articles. Joe, do you have a, or Mary, do you have an active list?
So you all do, actually. For board members, you should have in front of you the latest, greatest copy. Mr. Chairman, yours is in front of your laptop, I think. The latest and greatest warrant. And what I'd ask you to do is turn into the table of contents, because this evening, there are six articles that you either haven't taken action on yet because the information was incomplete, or, and I think two cases, there was language change upon further review, so I can explain those. And then in one instance, there's the new article based on the discussion we had last week. So if you're looking at your table of contents, you'll see Article 4, which has always been our standard article on the operating budget. If you turn to page 11 in the standalone document, you can see that the information has been updated, where we have a final number on page 11, and then on page 12, you can see the operating budget table that typically appears in that section.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I can go article by article if you'd like, or describe all of them and go back, whichever you prefer.
Article by article.
Sure.
And all we have to do, all we have to do on 4 is accept the amount, accept and adopt.
Correct.
But this is a good time to segue into safer grant. If we all remember correctly, the chief was before us applying for a grant for four firefighters. He, at the last meeting we had, did not recommend that we go forward unless we add something into budgets from now forward. He ultimately wanted to make sure that on year four, these would be picked up into their budget. Do you wish to have that conversation tonight and a vote on support? And then come back with the operating budget when we have the final, final, final number? Or is it fair to say, given everything that's been added back in, that maybe it's not the time to add any more money into our budget? And I'll start with Dawn.
The hour is late. I'm not sure what we're gonna get out of it if we start another discussion about funding it for next week.
Mary?
I just think we shouldn't touch those four positions right now.
Julie?
I agree. I don't know where, how we're gonna fund it long term, so...
Larry?
I'm okay with that. I do at some point, not necessarily change the budget, but I do have some questions about the budget I'd like to raise at some point.
Sure. Why don't we do it now before we go forward?
Okay. This is, and I apologize, some of this I probably should know already, but on line 26, we have, well, we have the operating budget, you know, $750,000 we put in for COLA. That's clear to me. The administration on line 26, enjoy addressing to you on the salary and wages. Is that where you've put in for either the cultural center or the housing advocate?
Correct. Both positions are presently in that line.
That's the both I was in there. And then the line 98 to $77,000 increase, is that covered the Board of Health? Well, I was just going through and seeing if we covered in the budget what we talked about with our department heads.
So I heard you say line 98. Could you repeat the second part of that, please?
Yes, I think so. It's a $77,000 increase. Was that to move the Board of Health, is, it's in the Board of Health part?
So I know that it's funding the...
So that's additional part-time?
Of course, I have my large budget book downstairs. Can I phone a friend?
Well, you can, you can come back. I'm just trying to understand it. Because I have the same question on 104, the Council on Aging, we have $45,500, and I assume that's also for additional part-time? Carol?
The new positions, or the new full-time positions for Council on Aging is within their salaries and wage line item. The new, the full-time position for Health Department is in their line item for salaries and wages. And then, and then, as Joe had answered, the two new positions are in administration.
I was just trying to track this. So the same is true of the building. We have 115, is that? There's an increase on that for salary and wages as well. I assume that's another, what's that for?
So building, I believe that reflects the unwinding of community development. It now features community development salaries for executive assistants within building. It also goes from the part-time inspector to the full-time?
No, so, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, go right ahead, please. I phoned a friend.
That's okay. I'm gonna hold you up. I'm just trying to reconcile what's in the budget with all of these.
All of the executive assistants that worked prior to that, this fiscal year, are in community development. All got split. One went to planning, one went to, or some went to building, some went to building, some went to Health Department, so that that community development salaries and wages is now budgeted at zero.
Okay.
And if I could have been looking at line...
That also helps me answer another question, because that went to zero. I was trying to...
Larry, one second. Larry, one second.
If you look at line 58, it reflects what Carol just mentioned.
Right. Okay. Go ahead, Larry.
I'm okay, because the last one I see we put in there was the Hubbard Master, $17,000, so that seems to be covered as well, so... Michael, my point was just to, I wanted to be clear in my own mind that we're covering what we talked about.
Yep. Thank you, Larry. Julie, questions, comments?
No, I don't have any questions.
Mary?
No, I'm all set.
Dawn?
Nope.
Can I get a motion to accept and adopt with that number?
I move that we vote to accept and adopt the town operating budget with an estimated cost of $42,188,893.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
If you then look at Article number 10 on page 15, so the article now refers to funding the Cape Cod Community Media Center. So I had the incorrect language in there last time. So what you'll see on pages 15 and 16 is this is the town's funding of that joint effort. And we, it's a standard article we've done year over year, but it's correcting the language.
And the fund source?
Comes again from the public...
PEG?
I used to know this. I can't call it PEG.
That's okay. PEG is close enough.
Public Education and Government Grant Access and Cable Related Fund.
Thank you. And this would be two votes, to place in the warrant and to accept and adopt, or have we already placed it in the warrant?
Well, I wouldn't say no to the vote to place it, just to have it in case.
Go ahead, Mary.
Little belt and suspenders.
I move that we place Article 10, Fund Cape Cod Community Media Center in the estimated amount of $147,302 on the warrant.
Second.
As presented.
As presented.
Moved in seconded. Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I move that we vote to accept and adopt Article 10, Fund Cape Cod Community Media Center, as presented with an estimated cost of $147,302.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Next, you can see on page 17, Article 13, Adopt the Capital Budget. And so what you see on page 17 is the final number that reflects the changes that you made last week. And I also should have referenced that in your packet, excuse me, in the warrant, Appendix B, what you were going through before is the operating budget. Appendix C is the capital budget.
Thank you.
So this has been placed, but you would need to accept and adopt, if that's what you agree.
Mary?
I move that we vote to accept and adopt Article 13, the capital budget, in the amount of $3446,298.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Thank you. On page 18 is Article 15. And this one is a standard item that was incorrectly left out, and it was confused with the other one. So I would ask just for consistency that we make sure it's placed, and then whether you accept and adopt.
I move that we vote to place Article 15, Public Education and Government PEG Access and Cable Related Funds for Access in the estimated cost of $66,470.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Roll call. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I move that we vote to accept and adopt Article 15, Public Education and Government PEG Access and Cable Related Fund for Access in the estimated cost of $66,470.
Second.
Moved in seconded to accept and adopt. Any discussion? Roll call. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
If you look at warrant, page twenty-seven, which is Article twenty-nine, and this is, this should look familiar to board members. It's a standard boilerplate that starts out the community preservation articles. It, you, you technically place this one in the warrant, but the language changed, and it changed to reflect what is typically done. If you recall, the original article simply talked about administrative expenses, and it was for sixty thousand. If you look on page twenty-eight at the top, that's the fourth number you see there. But we have this language here because it's allocating the monies that go, or appropriating the monies that go to, quote, the buckets. And so you have placed it. Certainly wouldn't object if you wanted to place it again, but the appropriate act tonight would be whether to accept and adopt.
Why don't we do both, just to be safe?
Okay. And do we read all four of those numbers by, by category?
So I would defer to the chair. He could say that you could make the motion to accept as presented and written.
As presented, okay.
That works.
All right. I move to place on the warrant Article twenty-nine, Community Preservation Committee Articles.
As presented.
As presented.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Roll call. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I move that we vote to accept and adopt Article twenty-nine, Community Preservation Committee Articles, as presented.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Roll call. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Thank you. And then if you look at page thirty-three, which is a representation of Article thirty-nine, if I'm reading my numbers correctly. And so, Mr. Chairman, members, as you may recall, there was a draft article presented through council that was trying to create a mechanism by which the town can fund and establish a process on trying to deal with the numerous parcels unknown. And so, Mr. Chairman, as you know, after conversations that you and I had with council, and within, with input by our town planner, this is the language that has been proposed by council. So you would need to, at some point, place and then accept and adopt. And then I would just turn it back over to board members for your discussion on it.
Joe, the only question is, I believe, the reason this went back to council is it says disposition of properties to fund parcels unknown, and that's not the intent of the article, because we're not identifying any. So I'm thinking you might be missing the original. So, the title change was, I'm just pulling up the email from John Giorgio. Fund Land Research for Assessing Purposes.
Thank you.
And then it would be Article thirty-nine, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of five hundred thousand dollars to be expended by the town administrator with approval of the board of selectmen to pay for researching land identified or reflected as owners unknown, miscellaneous, or undesignated parcels in the town assessor's database or mapping system for purposes of clarifying title, ownership, or location of such land for town assessing and related purposes, including to determine or establish the town's interest in said parcels. Such sums shall include all fees, costs, and expenses associated with activities necessary, proper, incidental, and related thereto, including but not limited to conducting and preparing engineering studies, surveys, and other plans, title research and appraisals, and to act fully thereon, estimated cost of five hundred thousand, by request of the board of selectmen. That's the article. I think you all got that this week. But the title of that would be Fund Land Research for Assessing Purposes. And I would, uh...
Land Research for, say that again?
Assessing Purposes. Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was concerned originally because John Giorgio seemed to be pushing this into giving preauthorization to sell properties that nobody even knew about. We'd never have to go back to town meeting. This is fine.
Yeah. That, your comments are what led to this.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mary?
I'm, I'm all set with that.
Julie?
No, I'm all set with the change. I'm just, I, I looked through this, and the only other question I had on that was, if we have a little asterisk, you know, we got into the fact that monies would have to be placed. I know that doesn't necessarily affect here, but just to explain that any monies that we got from selling the properties, we would have to put a portion in, in case anybody ever came back. Just to clarify for the public who are looking at this.
So I would say that we could do that in the explanation.
Yeah.
And then we're thinking future town meeting with a list of parcels that the board would entertain selling and let town meeting choose.
Yeah, definitely.
And then we would put escrow money for this.
Right. I just wanted to clarify that we would have escrow money set aside. So whatever way, the best way to do that is, I'm just bringing that up.
Okay. Larry?
I agree. I'm okay.
Joe, anything on this?
No. Sorry for the confusion on the title. And again, at this point, it would just be place and whether you accept and adopt.
Okay.
I move that we place Article thirty-nine, Disposition of Properties to Fund Land Research for Assessing Purposes, on the warrant.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Roll call. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I move that we vote to accept and adopt Article thirty-nine, Disposition of Properties to Fund Land Research for Assessing Purposes. Oh, I forgot, in the amount of five hundred thousand.
Yes.
Second.
Don't we want to read it for the fund? Oh, all right. Just, but we're not doing disposition.
No, that, that's the Fund Land Research for Assessing Purposes.
That'll come later.
Okay, all right.
Got it?
Got it. Sorry.
Moved in seconded. Do we clear up your confusion? I just want, I don't want to move on if I have it. Okay, all right. Roll call. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
So then, Mr. Chairman, what you have in front of you is a warrant that contains fifty-eight articles for the annual town meeting. And again, four appendices. The first is the annual town election warrant, which will be Appendix A. Appendix B is the operating budget. Appendix C is the capital budget. And Appendix D is the district agreement amendments with commentary.
Thank you. So the next action you'd be looking for, and there's one more housekeeping thing that we have to do, is to close the warrant?
Uh, correct. Vote to close the warrant and then sign the warrant after your housekeeping.
Okay. So last week, it was brought up to, on whether or not board had either previously voted or at least stated unanimously not to put in the new positions into the warrant. It's been brought up by at least one member of the finance committee and one member of the board of selectmen on whether or not we want to put those two positions someplace in the warrant. We've covered it in the operating budget. We have had extensive conversations about these two needs for the town throughout the year, and I'm not sure that anything's been more debated than this, this year. So I think that the transparency certainly is there. So, back to procedural, which I can't find instances where we've done this, that it hasn't been a override. So, what's the intent of the board? Don?
You're right. Up until Chris Clark came here, we didn't. But prior to that, I've found more than a dozen instances that there wasn't an override, and they were added, going back to the late nineties. We could choose to do whatever we want. I'm just pointing out that we had always considered that part of the charter to highlight new positions that were coming on, so that everybody would know there wasn't going to be. I, I get that we're gonna put it in the budget, but we have a frightening ability to zoom through forty million dollars in ten or fifteen minutes, pretty much every year. I'm hoping that nobody decides to come and make an amendment on the, the major motion, because that always confuses people. That was the major reason to do it this way. It wasn't to try to, I personally want to see both of these positions approved. So it's not like a play for me to expose them somehow to get them turned down. But that's, it had been done routinely through two different town administrators until Mr. Clark got here.
Thank you, Don. Mary?
You know, I spent a lot of time thinking about this, because last week, hearing some different people comment, I thought about, you know, being open and transparent. Maybe we should do that. Then I got to thinking about the numbers of times that we have talked about it. There's, you'd have to be under a rock to not know those two positions, because we've talked about them regularly. So I'm comfortable with it being in the, in the, in the budget, in the warrant, and, and let the discussion fall there. There's no need making this warrant any longer than it needs to be.
Thank you.
And we hired four, when, when the chief, Chief LeBlanc got up and talked about hiring four firefighters a few years back, that was just in his oper, that cinched it for me.
Thank you. Going back to Joe?
I, I would just say I've done some research on this, based on input from the board, from finance committee and other members. And as the board knows, I've shared my research with you last week in my email. But I think it's accurate to say that since the present charter was adopted on February third of two thousand and six, neither my predecessor nor his predecessor actually has any examples. So, the last known example goes back, all the way back to two thousand and one. But again, that was also then tied to funding. And so for me, that's always been the key point. The charter talks about subject to appropriation, and of course, we know that everything we do is subject to appropriation. So I think it is accurate for me to say that my research has shown that the town has not done anything like this in the last fifteen years, or since the adoption of the charter in two thousand and six.
Thank you. Julie?
No, I'm comfortable with the community as part of budget. I think we've talked about it extensively, and the history shows that it's fine to do that.
Larry?
Yeah, I, I, obviously, I'm, I'm on the opposite side of that. I, I need to be consistent. I've argued this basically on the cultural center that we should be transparent, as did my request always for finance numbers on what operational costs are, capital costs, and so on, going forward. And my guess is, and my assumption is, both of these will, will pass town meeting relatively easily. But I do think we need to, and these are both somewhat, though, of interesting and maybe even a bit contentious. I hate to be accused of hiding the information. And I know we're popular, but I don't think everyone watches our board of selectmen meetings. And I, I do think that it's good to explain this, what we're going forward at the town meeting.
Well, I think we can do it as part of the budget message just as easily. I, I don't see how we're gonna add two descriptions and positions after we vote the number. So the only way this makes any sense to me at all is to remove those two numbers out of the operating budget and then have a, a further article, and then, and then go back and amend the operating budget after the fact. And what's the difference between someone trying to make an amendment at the beginning of town meeting? Transparency, it's a great word. We've been more than transparent, and this has been scrutinized. There's, there's a group on one side and a group on the other, and there seems to be an awful lot of debate with the groups. I, I don't think that we're being, trying to hide anything. I think we're following the, the balanced budget that the town administrator gave us with two board priorities. Maybe not unanimously, but the board has talked about these for years. And to not go forward with them in, in the operating budget, to me, sounds, it seems silly. This is a, these are, these are priorities and things that we have, we have discussed for months. Before I go to a motion or non-motion, just an agreement to do or not do, I would call on John.
Thank you, Michael. John Chori, as myself. I'm not gonna talk about the two positions.
Thank you.
You know, it's okay. Just briefly, I mean, I, I have expressed my opinion on them.
I know.
I've sent you all emails, and so I think what you're discussing is fine, and we'll sort it out on, on town floor. What I'd like to do is just a clarification on two articles. We met last March thirty-first. It seems like last, it was last three days ago, you know? But anyway, there was two articles that we voted, no recommendations pending further information. And the reason we did that is because we know, we know, we knew we had a charter obligation of getting all recommendations, recommendations into Joe and yourself by March thirty-first. And, and we had just gotten the new warrant roughly about two hours before our meeting at six o'clock. So we really didn't have a good time to understand the numbers, and so we voted not, no recommendations pending further.
Yep.
Now, we do have a, a number on the capital, but we don't, what we don't have on the capital is the explanation of why it went up a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Maybe you do, and the sheets in front of you have that explanation. Is that what's on the sheets in front of you?
We have a list in, in Appendix what?
No, it was the police crew.
Wasn't in the warrant that I got last?
It was the police cruisers.
No. Oh, it was the police cruisers?
Right.
Is that what it was? But, but it went up?
I can give you a copy of this tonight.
Okay, but it went up a hundred and sixty thousand?
Yeah, I know that they were a hundred and fifty-six. We also gave Carolyn twenty-four hundred. No, that's in your budget. Never mind.
Right.
Okay, so it was just, anyway, you can give me a...
I give you a copy of it.
Okay, so that's one, we, otherwise, you would have voted for the budget, but we just didn't have an explanation of what the increase was. And the second one was the CPC article, twenty-nine, yeah, twenty-nine, that, that was new to us, brand new. And we, it was a big number, six fifty, and we didn't understand that number. We had some discussion. One of the former members, I mean, one of the members on the committee was on the CPC. It, it is twenty-nine. He gave an explanation, but he wasn't a hundred percent sure. I have since talked to Dave Nixon. It is a customary, normal article. So we would have voted for it, had we known that. But the question I have is, we voted on the thirty-first. We, we do have a scheduled meeting tomorrow night. We can reconsider those two, as I'm guessing, not speaking for the board, but for myself, that will both give them a positive motion for recommendation, accept and adopt, and not an NRFP.
Yeah.
Which I like to do. I don't, I don't like to see that in the warrants as a recommendation for the finance committee. Will I still be able to meet charter regulation?
Do we have time? It's going to print tomorrow?
Correct.
So it has to stay in the way it is?
Okay. Then we can redo it on, uh...
Town meeting, our meeting before.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, we'll have the standard motions meeting, the middle of this month, to literally go through the motions. And the motions will reflect the updated recommendations. Couldn't resist.
So you'll be able...
There'll be several opportunities.
Yeah.
We, so, but what will the?
You should vote it.
Tomorrow night?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's not gonna be into the, into the warrant.
Okay.
When we do the motions meeting, you will have a positive motion made for that, because you'll have voted it.
Okay.
It's just not gonna say it in the warrant.
Uh, great. That was my next question, is should we cancel tomorrow night's meeting as a non-binding? Okay. Okay, great. And not that debate that the last two, cultural center and advocate, is that we did, in the emails I sent you, we voted on them anyway as a non-binding recommendation, and we all voted six, six for, one abstention. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, back to the business at hand. It sounded like we had three, one against, and maybe one maybe. Does somebody want to take a shot at a motion to include, to put these back in, or are we just not going to?
Why bother? My plea is still that we spend some time explaining the budget to people. Because otherwise, I'd hate to have the budget be strongly contested because of, of, of people not understanding what we're doing.
I agree. Don?
Yeah, I'm not gonna go through a motion situation here, but I will say that we're back into a corner. We have to go to print on this thing. This is a discussion that we probably should have had like a month or so ago to sequence this, right? If we were doing it this way. And to Joe's point, that particular article never changed in three iterations of the charter. It's still, it's still the same, is what it said back in the early two thousands, the, the charter, in, in Section Four. So, I, I'll go for it this year, but I really can't see myself ever agreeing to this again unless people know upfront. It's, it's a benign thing. If you're not, if it doesn't look like you're hiding anything, and you put the articles in, I feel like we have a much better chance of everybody believing that this is a good thing, and they'll approve it. I've never seen them turn down something that's singled out and brought to their attention, when we argue that we need these two things.
Well, it sounds like we need to have a policy, because right now, there's no policy.
Yeah.
And to Joe's research and your comments, I'm more confused than when I walked in.
But we gotta print the, the warrant, so I'm willing to relent on it.
Go ahead, Julie.
And I just think that we do have to have a policy, because at this point, we're talking about pulling things out that weren't pulled out previously. So I understand where you're both coming from, but at the same token, that means that you're gonna say that going forward, every new position should be pulled out, so firefighter, police, everything should be a separate article in the warrant? I'm just saying, going forward, that's what we're really talking about. We're focusing on these two pieces. But if you're saying that, then you're saying that every new add... gets pulled out like that instead of being part of the operating budget.
Yeah.
Which then, I think you have to be realistic about what you're doing by pulling those things out, so, you know, they're not, then they're not part of the operating budget, now they're, they're wants that are debated on, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's a little different than-
Well, let's bring this back, we'll debate this after town meeting, because my brain is getting tired.
Yeah, we can answer that.
Um, Mary, can I get a motion to close the warrant?
I move that we close the two thousand and twenty-two warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, vote, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Congratulations. It was a lot of work over the last weeks. We will, the other policy we're going to talk about is a new timeline, as soon as town meeting is over, so we're not doing this next year.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, very quickly, there are five signature pages?
Yes.
So we need signatures on all five, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, and then the next item was discussion, and I put treasure chest stickers, Carol and I had had a conversation, as well as Joe, so we don't need to talk about this. They did find some money in one of the sticker budgets or DPW budgets, so we're ordering stickers. And a public hearing has been set up.
Oh, okay.
For the, for the fee. Great.
Did they, go ahead and open anyway?
No.
They're not opening yet.
No, they'll-
Oh, it's May first, so it's-
Well, April, yeah.
I thought it was April.
But I think the, so we have stickers now?
Yeah, I agree with you.
They're ordered.
Because we, the committee did talk about, not a long discussion, because we, chances of having stickers and have, be able to sell those before we open it this month is next to zero, so we'll just, they'll put out some big signs saying Harwich residents only, and trust that people understand what's going on.
Yeah.
Larry, for the first few weeks, you're going to stand at the gate, right?
Well, that's what the committee's told me, but I'm not sure I'm following that order.
All right, contracts. Mary?
We vote to accept and execute a contract with ComStar Ambulance Billing Service for the billing and collection of emergency ambulance services for the Harwich Fire Department. The town agrees to pay ComStar Ambulance Billing Services two and a half percent of actual receipts delivered.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
I guess.
Whatever.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
Aye.
Do you want to have some discussion? I skipped over that part.
She's just talking to herself there.
I'm not in favor of, of ambulance billing, as we've had multiple conversations when I was previously-
I remember that, actually.
But, yeah.
But somebody's going to be doing it, okay.
So I'll go for it.
This year, another policy discussion.
Yeah, later when we can talk about it again.
All right, so we got an aye and an aye.
And an aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don? And I'm an aye. Bee? Do you want to do discussion on this first, or do you want to do a motion and then into discussion?
I'd go for a motion.
Okay.
I move that we vote to accept the proposal from, from John W. Carey for the purchase of Five Bell's Neck Road, West Harwich, in the amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and execute a purchase and sales agreement.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, discussion. Larry?
I'm very pleasantly surprised, and I, you know, we did, we've been worried about this for years and years, and finally got one that seemed to give us some money and guaranteed historical preservation of the building and housing, so it's a short discussion for me, I, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, Julie?
I'm over the moon.
Mary?
I'm with Julie, that's, that hits all the buttons, it's on the tax rules, I mean, four apartments is four more than currently have.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just two things, I'm pleased that he's willing to keep the historic envelope of the building with a historic preservation restriction on it, but nothing that's in a purchase and sale survives the purchase and sale, how are we going to administer the actual imposition of that onto the title?
Joe? I would need direction from the board as to whether you want that to be a deed restriction, and we can move forward in such a manner.
For me, it was a preference, the historical preservation was a preference, and I don't want to tie anyone's hands behind their back, I think his proposal, I'm going to take it at its face value, and I, and I, he spoke about it, that's what he says he's going to do, if he sells the project ten years down the road, should it be tied to it? I don't believe so myself, I, I, I think it was a preference of the board, not a requirement. Mary?
In, in his defense, he speaks of being a third-generation gentleman from Harwich that already has, I think he said, two other multifamily, I, I don't have any reason to distrust him, he sounds, I don't know him, but he sounds like a local, he's been here quite some time.
Don, follow up?
Yeah, I mean, that was a, one of the dilemmas we always had in the planning board, somebody came in, it was an iconic second, third, fourth generation Cape Codder, and we like tried to help bill out by giving him an approval or something, and two or three years later, he passes away, and all of a sudden, there's somebody off Cape that comes in, unless it's in writing, there's no enforceability whatsoever in the future.
Julie?
So why do we ask him? Maybe he does want it preserved and protected.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make him do that, but we could certainly ask if he's willing to do that, so that it's protected if, I mean, you can ask.
Joe, can we suggest?
Yes, absolutely, in fact, depending upon the outcome of this vote, that would be my next step anyway, is on behalf of the board, I would reach out to him, let him know what the board voted, and then we would work on finalizing the arrangements.
Okay, and you can come back to us with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anything further, Larry?
No, I don't want to put any obstacles in front of him right now, I take your point, but if he can put a formal policy and, and say that, that'll at least protect it for some years, because it'll be built at that point.
I've seen some of his projects, he does a great job. Any further follow-up, Don?
Yeah, I just want to caution you that, that, at that level of rent, I'm out of this game entirely, but if, at that level of rent, it, it does not fit area mean income of either sixty or eighty percent, he's talking about workforce housing, which is fine with me, but I just wanted you to know that that's not going to be an affordable housing complex of any sort.
I'm for workforce housing.
Okay, roll call, vote, Larry?
Aye.